All the next meeting to order is seven thirty-three on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the regular city council meeting. Of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. I am Mayor Ethan Anderson. We have tonight with us Karen McFerrin, Dana Dominguez, Josh Schultz, and Omar Martinez. I will, uh, let's start by approving the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second, there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Uh, we'll approve the consent agenda, including the city council meeting minutes from our last meeting in June and the June sewer report. Before we got it, everybody got a chance to look through those if they're looking to approve. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Movement second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero.
Sorry, I did have this second, but you said it so fast. Um, I just noticed in the minutes that Sherry has still said interim clerk speaker. Not to.
And then.
I do get that.
That's definitely going forward. Thank you.
But yes, I.
Good catch. Okay. I'll slow down. Thank you.
That's a good thing. It wasn't a big deal. I mean, but it was kind of, but.
Um, we'll move on to item four, reports. Uh, starting with our city mayor, Leo Pollard.
Okay. A couple of things to, well, well, number two. So we've had the pre-construction meetings with phase one and phase two contractor. They've all told us they'd start by now. They both haven't started, which seems to be the the going way it is with contractors right now. Um, phase one is the well project with pumps and motor. We did receive some middles. That does mean that they're getting close. So I would think it's probably about a couple of more weeks before they move on.
You received some what?
The middles. So they tell us, we tell them what pump, what motor, what things they need to supply. And they have a number of different vendors they can get them from, and they supply it to us and we review it to make sure it meets all of our criteria. Okay. So they have started doing that. Little things like wire conduit, they have not submitted yet, and he's the one that said he would start right away. I did hear that he got he's the owner of that electrical company that's pissed up and heard they got hurt. Maybe that's a little bit of the delay, but hopefully not. Um, that's, that's the well project. I think we're two or three weeks away from starting. Um, next project is Maxon and Rainbow. They are making slow progress on Maxon and Rainbow. I told them I wanted a better schedule. They have not provided us a good schedule yet. Uh, they have started doing some other things. They've started doing the trail part of the project. They aren't moving along. They are. I wouldn't even say they're really behind schedule as far as getting it done when we want it done by the end of the year. They're behind what they told us they'd be. So, um, part of the course there. Next one down is the Columbus Street sidewalk. We have submitted it to the DOT. They gave us comments. We resubmitted it to DOT last week. We haven't seen any comments back. I suspect it'll go through. They really, their comments were pretty easy for us. They were more or less, um, change, uh, some of the ADA requirement type things, how we showed them on planes. Um, we have an issue that it's often the city manager will have to deal with, with one of the owners of one of the businesses there. It does not want this sidewalk. We're not putting it on their property, but still, we usually get a temporary easement from them. So when we're putting it on there, on our property or on the city's property, it, it doesn't understand. In this case, we pay the Iowa property. We'll get, but no use. But we usually like to get a temporary easement from the owner. It will be kind of going back and forth and patch. A lot of times the owners will say, we're not gonna give it. And the city can say, that's fine. We'll put it in the way we want. Another big pump. We are. We had to do that in this place before. They're usually the owner. So it's a negotiation. We just edit quite that.
What do you mean by big pump?
So let's just say we're gonna put sidewalk up, um, six inches. So normally we pave out into their yard, into their driveway a little bit and sold it. The, it's a nice check.
Oh, yeah.
But if they don't let you come on their properties, stop. Doesn't hurt. It doesn't happen. You always threaten it. Never happens. Usually somebody comes around. Yeah. Once they realize they can't stop the project.
Uh, and is this, the sidewalk gonna be in front of that? Like the JVs on that street, that side street, all the way around the subway corner?
So it, it, it starts right at Subway and so Subway and Rainbow. Comes around Subway in the front.
In the front, yeah.
On to, so there's a big ditch there. We stay on the Subway side of the ditch, which is, which is still, um, road right away. There's a lot of road right away there. And we come around to the car wash. There's road right away there. And we come around to one of the bars. Maybe they're not so happy. And then we come all the way down Columbus to where there's existing sidewalk.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I see.
Then you have sidewalk the whole way.
The whole way. Cause I thought there was actually sidewalk to that side street, but yeah. There's just the, maybe two squares or everything.
Either, and we'll probably tear another piece of out.
Okay.
The part that, where the car wash comes down, does that have to be redone because of the angle of it?
We're leaving that as concrete, but we're, we're putting in new sidewalk in the middle level. So we'll be cutting through there with level sidewalk and having to level it on either side.
Okay.
The side between the sidewalk and the road might almost all have to be. That brings me to the next issue. Um, when All American went and looked at it and they had a bunch of questions and we had to change our drawings a few different times to get it to work. There's also a fire hydrant that they wanna move and a couple of other things that we didn't have in our estimate. So their estimate, we just received this, is about seventy-four thousand, six hundred. We estimated it to be about fifty-five thousand. So it's a little higher. I'm not giving this to the city manager. We do believe there's some reasons it's higher and some of them are like, we didn't try to move into the fire hydrant, which they had as a thousand, three hundred dollars. So what I'm gonna do, see if we can go around it. You don't have to. That's gonna be the next job here. Look and see if there's a way we can get away without moving that. That'd bring it down. They also had a couple of other numbers that were quite, oh, their seeding fertilizer number went way higher than what I thought they were. We thought they were gonna be five hundred. They came in at seven seventy-nine hundred. I'm betting he thinks he needs to put, um, matting in there and I wasn't thinking that. So I'd like to talk to Simon and find out why. Why is his number? Cause it's really low to I have done that even though.
The fire hydrant has always been there though. The fire hydrant is that mess.
Because either I thought just doing it at first, we could just miss it. And then when we got the survey in, for one reason or another, we did. I, and to be honest, I didn't do it. So I need to get back to my Eric, if he's got it, he did it inside the roof. He's really good. Usually if there's a wave, he misses wood. Some cities like those sidewalks, go straight. For instance, Leclerc city manager liked them to go straight. He didn't want us to avoid anything. Others, Bed North avoids things all the time. I preferably like to avoid it. I think it's easier. I don't, when I'm around makes bad looking sidewalk. Sometimes I think it looks. I'm not that engineer to likes everything straight. Somebody does. So let me go back and I'll get back to the city manager on that in the next couple of days. Right? But then everything is done. We do not have approval from the DOT. Expect to get it anytime.
Okay.
Typically the way where you fill out all their paperwork, you give it to them, they comment, you give it back and then you get approval. That's where we're asked. Okay? And then that's that one.
I just wanna say, while you're on the sidewalk, it's great to, great to hear that that's happening.
Yes.
To be able to walk from downtown to Subway.
I think, I think it will be.
Across the street and take the nice new trail down to Dudley Park. It's a big, big improvement to the connectivity and blockability of the city. That's a big deal.
So then with that said, Mary, and think of maybe the comprehensive plan in two thousand and seventeen and then following strategic plan. That's been a goal that has been set by previous leadership and, um, you're continuing that goal and you know, it's nice to know that we're in, it has been a trail of blockability and yeah.
Absolutely.
And connect that side.
And to that point, I, I mean, we should keep going. That's one thing that people have brought up to me. Probably one of the main things that people have brought to me actually is, you know, you can't walk to the pharmacy on the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, you know.
Yeah.
So we, we really need to.
Yeah.
And we talked about a lot, but.
A little bit.
Okay, so that was, um, last, the last thing on that one, the subdivision you probably have all seen is going great guns. We probably start to need to get over there and make sure those forms are, those have got it all laid out. They don't have it installed, but they installed it. Now it helps for us to be around and I think they have to pay for that. We do inspection, they, the subdivision pays for our inspection. They usually don't like us to inspect. We'll absolutely guarantee that. But make them do it the way they should do it and I'm telling you, it works better that way. So we'll be getting together with them then. Um, the Natty Circle Division. We are done with the design. Again, we have sidewalk issue. Need sidewalk on division. You will need right away. No, if, if indoors about it, when we thought for a while, we might just sneak it in there, but we couldn't. We are in the process now of, we go out and survey, we get a few pins, make sure what's available. But once we decide we have to acquire right away, it's a different process. So we had to go back.
Explain what the right of way is.
So, so on a lot of streets, you have like thirty, sixty foot right away. I mean, the road is in the middle and then say the road's thirty foot and you have, you know, fifteen feet on each side. And the city owns for utility sidewalks, whatever. On some streets, division, that right of way isn't a straight sixty. Sometimes they narrow it down to forty. Cause they've done years and years, years ago for one reason. You know, you don't know a lot of times the reason.
And is it, is it true to follow up on that? Is it true that on a typical street design, the sidewalk would be kind of the inner border of the right of way? Is that roughly fair to say?
I, I call it almost the outer border.
Outer.
The border between that, usually in new design, new designing, it would be one foot off the property line. It's very often. So the property line is here and one foot on the city property is where you go side.
So that space between the sidewalk and the road is all owned by city, maintained by the homeowner.
Boulevard, green, green spaces. It's, it's maintained by the homeowner, owned by the city, home owner. Mm-hmm. So here we don't have that proper amount. And so what we have done so far is we put the plans together. What I will do is come back to you at the next council meeting with plans, specifications and a final cost. And then a schedule and you can review that. And then if everybody approves, we go home. It will probably have the sidewalk defined and done, but maybe done by others. We may have to do that in a separate contract to get all right away in order. Usually you don't go out for bids until you get that right away done. So instead of holding up the whole project, we just hold up one side of the project, one side of the sidewalk. So that's that part. And the last part of the city hall. I know you don't like having this room as being your council chamber. So I think there are meetings that are being scheduled to kind of get that all rolling into the regulation. Right. That's all I had to do.
What can I add about the, um, the cost of the Natty Circle Drive project? I know it, the bids have come in a lot higher. What are we looking at there as far?
We haven't got a biz. Our, our engineer adjustments came in much higher. So we took Gibson out, which was gonna be an asphalt overlay. And Gibson's got some, we, we know the sanitary problems at the same time. So I think we're gonna do that at a later date. We'll probably have, go through and line the sewer first.
Okay.
And then come back and do it.
I guess maybe I wasn't remembering that. So.
By taking, by taking Gibson out, it made it come within budget. Two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that.
So it's still all of Natty Circle and Division?
Well, division, what we'll do with, um, Gibson, I'm sorry. So we'll go back, I'll work with Leo and we'll update the capital improvement plan. And then we'll refigure in for Gibson, but yes, division will not be supported.
Uh, when you say all of Natty Circle, it is part of, it's not the entire road. The actual circle part has already been done.
Oh, okay.
So it's connecting that part. Anything that hasn't been done will be redone. With concrete, new curb redone.
And all the infrastructure underneath is all done or we have to redo?
I think that's, there's not infrastructure. There's no.
There are sewer.
No, not of that. And then on division, it's really patchy. And so it's not a major elevation.
Okay, so that's not gonna be new.
Not, not, not brand new. Patching with new curb, a new, um, new sidewalk.
Questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, with, can we, can we manage your hurts?
So Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, I'm gonna, we'll need to get a report on from the city manager. However, though I'd like to, um, have the departments go before meeting and then help finish.
That's on. That's a thing. Um, does city council have any questions from any of these submitted reports? We can start there if we do. Any, uh, department heads joining us tonight that, anything you wanna share with us from your reports?
Um, the library, uh, does not, library board doesn't meet in July, um, due to the fact that it would always fall during fair.
Yeah.
Um, so I did submit our speed utilization report, which was, um, completed, um, a month ago. Um, and so the board has seen that. We had Shawna Stewart of, uh, TFL Stewart Consulting, um, complete that. And we would first move the grant from.
Excellent. Very comprehensive report.
Yeah, it has some really interesting information.
Yeah. Enjoy the comparisons with other community libraries.
It's definitely giving them quite a bit of, um, things to think about. Um, we're definitely looking for additional funding for our collections to grow those to be about the size that our libraries are.
Yeah. Makes sense. Any other, uh, department head wanna share anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have been working a lot with Mark Seap lately on trying to get all of their information to get this renewal for our permit. It takes excessive lab testing and a lot of other uh, factors that go into it. So I've been sending him a lot of information so we can get that accomplished by September, when it's due, I believe.
Due in September?
Correct. We have three rounds of lab testing and then that's a lot of other paperwork that we've done over the years. Toxicity testing, all this other stuff. Has to be included in the report before the renewal can be done. So we're working on that.
Questions for, um, your adjutants? I read through the, the testing documents that were included in our package. It's an incredible list of, uh, unpronounceable chemicals that need to be addressed.
Yeah, it's a little expensive, that's for sure.
That's for sure.
Nothing we can do in house. That's guaranteed.
Sure.
Yeah, we're working on that. Hopefully we'll get their permit renewed. What they do is basically they give us their, uh, expectations. They give us a permit. We look it over for like, well, they look it over for like four months, then we can make changes or try to. And then you get the final approval after about six month period.
So it's a back and forth where they, they do the, the review and then tell you what needs to change and then they follow up on that?
That's correct. Basically you can, uh, debate what changes they're gonna make.
Okay.
We're getting the engineering firm involved. So Leo could tell you more about it. They've done it for a lot of other towns. So you can basically barter back and forth on what you think should be included and what should be excluded.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's exactly true. It's, they'll, they put together their, when they see the data, they put together a rationale. And from that rationale, they decide what you should be testing for for the next five years. Generally, um, their rationale is extraordinarily certain. Meaning they want you to test for more things than maybe most wastewater operators think is logical. So then we come in and we give them rationales on why certain parameters shouldn't be included, the normal way goes back. Um, they agree with, maybe a few they don't. But we're almost always able to get a lot of our opinions and thoughts. It's not a negative type thing. It's back and forth and we tell them why certain parameters shouldn't have to be tested for. We just got done doing it for David Porter and Leclerc, so I'm very completely. Where for instance, they might've told Leclerc, um, Leclerc that they had aluminum in there, you know, metal, aluminum metal in there. They wanted to test for the next five years, which we know we only have one test forever. Let us do this, this and this to prove to you aluminum's not in there normally. And that was a crazy test. That's the kind of thing that goes back.
Kind of a negotiation.
You don't wanna have to test for everything they do because, as he says, it's, it's expensive and it's, it's pretty difficult to do all this.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council or?
Um, what, in the electric department's report, what is it consists of with secondary upgrades? What is that consists of? Just curious. I don't know if Mr. Chivers is on. I don't think he's on.
I'll see Mr. Chivers.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know. I was just getting clarification with that man.
Okay.
It could be. Okay, I mean, I, just the, I, I know that our electric department's been doing a lot of work, um, with the short street project um, for the park. And so there's been some electrical work that they've been, um, handling as far as, um, running the lines and connecting. And, um, typically we don't do secondary to the home. However, I, I understand that there's work being done so that the secondary can connect to our utility before the new structure that are there. Okay. Uh, likewise, um, Ed, I mean, and again, I'll communicate with Mr. Chivers. We talked about the reports. But, um, there's been quite a bit of work with our city engineers over the developments and going back and forth and looking at um, working with the developers to meet, um, request, um, to see what we can do versus um, our ability because of the municipality versus a larger. So he's been working, I've been focusing on those things. Um, and, um, we did have, uh, a discussion. I was not able to attend, um, the BHMG meetings today to go over those developments that I'll touch base with Ed um, tomorrow and, and see where we're at with those. Um, Leo and I both, um, have been in discussions with, um, BHMG is to be looking at the design for the look for the powerhouse. Um, somehow, um, you know, our, our communication's dropped off because again, we were hyper focused on just trying to get well, number two and the work inside the building going. And so we've got that, um, he did reach out and so there's conversations going on about that. And then we worked through the Rainbow Maxon, uh, bidding for the electrical work. And, um, I know Ed spent some time reviewing that, reviewing the contractors that are being one of them, they could show. So. Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's what's going on. And when staff themselves have been out, um, you know, again, and working and doing the labor for those, for the bill that they're on short street. So. If, if he can just have that reflected in his report, the communication with the engineer and just so we know as far as the construction or not, the, um, working with the developments on what is going on, that would be great. I will make sure of all of it. Okay, very well done. Thank you.
I wanted to mention, uh, that I noticed the new tourist sign, I think you call it, by Casey's that was blown down by the, by a storm. Oh, so kind of a wayfinding sign that points to, um, a few of the like destinations you would wanna go to if you're out of town. So I, is that streets of that? Adam, is that, that an Adam project or is that?
I think, I think that.
Is that DOT?
That's actually me.
Oh, it is. It's not Adam.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, it was a pain.
I was glad to see that somebody had asked me about that sign and was poured up. So.
We've had it sitting at the shop for like a month, but nobody's wanted to mess with it. I see why. It sucked.
Those are nice signs though. They, I think they, they add a lot for somebody from out of town.
I actually found out those are ours to maintain, um, about three months ago.
Okay.
All the wayfinding signs on the highway are all the city's responsibility.
Okay.
So that's cool.
Yeah, I think, um, and Adam, I mean, maybe you found this out. It was a, um, it was a chamber project. Um, I, I believe there was a grant.
Okay.
And then there's permission provided, um, to place those signs in, in the right of way. Um, so thank you. Thank you, Adam, for finding out that that is our responsibility. Maintain those signs. So we'll do so going forward.
Okay, it's a little bit of an aside, but I also had somebody ask me about the, uh, just bringing this up now while you're here, Adam. Um, the welcome to West Liberty sign that's on Prairie by the gun club entrance. And I, I think I remember actually talking about that sign when I was on city council.
Correct.
Years and years ago. So do we know what? It's just that the trees are grown up in front of it. So it kinda seems like we either need to take it down or maintain it. So I don't know where that.
Hmm. I, I, I just think the, the discussion, you know, kind of lost its, you know, discussion, its power, you know, and it went away. Cause I, I, I I think historically it was either the Rotary or the Lions or someone who had sponsored the sign and then like, you know, and again, yeah. And so, and I could be wrong. So, I mean, this works. So, um, yeah.
I wonder if we should just make that an, an action item to try to track that down. Cause it, I think the problem is it sort of feels like maybe it's city's responsibility because it says, well, the West Liberty and then it looks bad. So.
Adam, I think we can work together and come up with a plan. You agree?
Yeah, we can just trim all the stuff up and be done with it.
Okay.
I had that jotted down. So you guys have been out trimming all that stuff last couple of weeks anyways. So I'll just add it to the list.
Okay, perfect. Well, that's solved it. You just like to get stuff done, right, Adam?
He does.
Pretty much.
Okay, any, any further questions, uh, uh, on any of these reports? Welcome back to you.
So, um, I'll quickly go through things. It's, it's been quite busy for the last few weeks. Um, just real quick touch based on, on the developments. And, um, I would just motion again, you know, you can join in with me on this conversation if you have anything to add. Um, so the DHS development, also known as the BIC development, um, uh, the July third, I followed up with Mr. Dumont. Um, he had actually communicated that he made contact with um, the city's electric engineers and was able to have a one-on-one conversation with them. Um, so they were able to, he said that was very hopeful. He was able to, um, provide them information and, um, so the last I had known is that based on that discussion, and again, I was not able to attend the meeting today. I'll follow up with Ed tomorrow. But I believe we have what we need, um, for that, uh, to be a finalized uh, piece for the development. I also told Mr. Dumont that, um, we could come back around and discuss since the development is, um, kind of, is changing that timeline that, uh, we could come back around and discuss the electric utility and, and maybe set a different direction on that, um, with the utility committee, um, here in the next few months. Um, DNR has approved. They reviewed everything as far as the drainage and the elevation as far as the floodplain. The city signed off on our review and of the floodplain and we've offered our permit. Um, they will follow, um, V strength him had provided a drainage study. So it's my understanding right now, they'll be working on, to bring that elevation up in, in line with that. So, um, so that's what they're gonna plan on doing over the next couple of months. And then we'll stay in touch as they're working through that to see where we're at with things. And again, follow, so we can talk about that, the electric one, that information. The Meadows development. So the Meadows development, um, so I So again, um, Sherry and I met with uh Mr. Akers. I think it was on um possibly July seven. Um, and had a conversation with Mr. Akers and talking about. The phases, um, he had been looking just to do phase one, um, his upgrades, um, we had discussed him providing us a timeline. Um, as he was looking to uh move in pre-model homes. And so that way we could provide an opportunity with our electric department, because it's been agreed on. That our electric department will go ahead and they have enough staffing that they can do the work themselves. Um, there's some more discussion I need to bring back to the electric committee and um propose a development agreement. As far as the electric utility work goes, if if we're going to be doing the work on that. Um, the other part of that discussion is, is there some questions on permits? Um, because each is a new uh modeled home. However, even though it's being assembled in a factory, does not make it. Um, not have to have a building permit, so has to have a building permit, so has to have an inspection. For the connection into the city utility, so Sherry is currently working with uh Terry Gert to put together a packet, and we'll have a meeting this week with. Uh, Mr. Akers to discuss that that packet. During our time of going through the permits, it came to our attention that um. And I'm just gonna. We can talk about it after we can touch base with me. Um, there was a step, there's steps that were missed with the development. Um, we need to bring this back to planning and zoning because the site plan was not approved prior to the development. Um, there was some misunderstanding that um because it's a private development, that it did not need to be. Uh, put before uh planning and zoning and council for approval, which is incorrect with our code. And so I reached out to Mr. Akers and apologized for. On the air, on the city side of it, and I'm working diligently to uh. Move it forward, get it corrected, so that way he can convince you on with this development. So, um, so Sherry will be reaching out to planning and zoning, will set a site plan for approval built as is. Um, Mr. Akers did follow, there was a drainage study, being paid provided that, they followed all of those instructions. Um, however, we cannot issue permits until uh council has signed off on the site. So you've gotta do some. Reversing, correcting, and then move it forward, but I think we can accomplish all that and keep things moving in the direct, you know, moving on time for. Mr. Akers, that's our. Okay?
Do, can I just ask a question about that, just so for for my our understanding? How how does that work? So even if it's a private development on private land? It always needs to be approved by planning, zoning, and council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does that mean we need to go back for the two months?
That's already good, so those all procedures were followed correctly.
Okay. Good.
Can I add just here ahead? So a lot of times subdivisions, you're actually subdividing properties, so there has to be a flat, that's what I mean, that always. Kind of opens you up to. This goes through council in the approval process.
Yeah.
With the one that was the mobile home, the makers area, it came to us as plans, we we did review the plans.
Mm-hmm.
We did make comments back to the previous city manager.
Right.
But it was a private development, so the streets aren't gonna be city streets, they're gonna be private streets, that's a big difference normally. But that's, I'm not saying why I got missed, I don't I don't really understand that part of it, but. But I'm just saying that that's what I I knew right away, it was something different, you know what I mean, than what we want to be.
And so it'd be, um, I guess comparison is you would look at the short, short street part of. The short street objects, the the road within that. Um, within those living quarters is not city street, it's private street that's maintained by. You know, the the property, or sometimes an HOA. However, so that that is correct, but that still goes through the process of being. Um, it has to still go through planning and zoning to make sure it meets. Again, the. Are, you know. Whether we are um comprehensive plan for growing, um, if it so long as that it meets what, you know. Um, in compliance for the building in order to, you know, issue permits. Um, if there's an agreement, if there's a request by the developer, if they're looking to have, for example, if they're not wanting to. You know, if they wanna have a reduction on building permits, if they wanna have, you know, um. You know, some different things, or if they wanna have. You know, specific easements, if they need, I mean, those are things that you would wanna have identified, and then you would go through a pre. Development agreement to make sure you've worked through those things. And then once that's been worked through and it's all understood and planning and zoning and send that recommendation to council. So it's vetted out, and so then council approves and signs off on the site plan, so then permits can be issued for that construction. Again, just because these are homes that have already been um built offsite doesn't change. The process, so so we'll get it corrected and get it moving forward and.
Right.
Okay, um, and yeah, and so, um, we've had an update about Natty Circle Drive. Um, well, number two, again, we talked about the roof. Um, Rainbow and Maxon Street Improvement Project, that the bigger part, um. Leo's got that under control, the bigger part was just getting the bids for the electric and we got him, and so that's really good, because that's. Kind of our final thing to keep keep it going, um, the We Care Program project. Um, I know, um, Councilmember Dominguez, we just got an email today, and I would really like to have you have the opportunity to share that information. Um, and then um from there, um, some financial management, um. Um, so again, you know, this is continuation with Sherry and I are working on audits. Um, in fact, Sherry was out at classes today, um, and she. Was assisting because we were both working through some other stuff, trying to get keep things moving, um, working on closing out your end, um. I'm continuing to working with Sherry to transfer my clerk duties from my previous. Or over to her, so she takes over in the new fiscal year. Um, we both have training that we're going through when it comes to financial management with taxing from that finance. Um, we have reporting deadlines coming up, um, we have a work comp audit, so we have a lot of financial deadlines and reporting that. Um, we have, as we continue, I can tell you that a hundred percent of, we shared with the mayor, we know that the mayor, a hundred percent of. Um, payroll duties have all been transferred over to Sherry. Um, a lot of other things she was already picking up on and caring for, so. Um, I think we both feel comfortable with where we're at, and we continue to work on that transition, um, she's been really busy with staff. Um, we finalized some transitions today, and she made that announcement to. Um, the city to, so let them know that, you know, how Melissa South is now able to be the only clerk. And when Ryan Hardaway down, her official role is that that's the city clerk, and then our two new staff members. Um, you know, when they.
No, it'd be her.
Yeah, um, and uh Bethany Ponce, so things are going well with their team, and we're moving along there.
Excellent.
Um, rag ride meetings, um, thank you, Brittany, Brittany's been, uh. She's been covering those for us, um, met with Adam, Adam and I met with Chief Worley. Uh, talked about streets, public, you know, the street safety. Um, where do we need people, we're we're getting close and asking for a little more finalization to where we can allocate people at um for the rag ride. Uh, I know you find you had another meeting today, collecting all the vendors. Um, working with the emergency service folks to make sure that. We've identified where they're at, and whatever we can do from the city perspective to make sure they got. You know, exits and and what they can do for that, um. Performance evaluation, they're still on schedule, um. Again, uh, we updated the wages, you'll see the wage resolution. Um, I spent time going through the budget, what was approved through the budget, lining that up. Along with doing some um salary uh review as far as our um, the career fields. The area wages and like cities um to get to where we were at with the wages. Um, this is the final year with using the matrix calculation. So there'll be some work that we'll have to be doing this fall to get that updated instead of another three-year plan for that process.
Yeah.
Um. So with that said, just a couple more things, um, had a phone call with Lisa Wirthberger today. Still some ongoing concerns, we've been trying to work out at Liberty Park. Um, we've had, um, some property owners have done some good job of cleaning up. Their areas out there and, um, but we are still having ongoing issues with trailers being parked. Um, along the public streets, and so there's some work that has to be done there, um, so Lisa and I talked about that, and we're gonna meet. Um, with the folks to to go over that trailer issue about parking out there, um. Mr. Ortiz, Eddie Ortiz has been doing a phenomenal job, um, we've had a lot of. Uh, projects, ripping projects due to the tornado and they, and so he has been working with Mr. Uh, Gertz, and um he's coordinated with him over his oversight, and he's been handling um ripping. Um, and we've had several contractors who have not applied their permits or not showed bonds. And I just like to say he's doing a great job going out, stopping work, explaining to them, getting them in here, getting them paid. Um, so he's doing a great job with that. Um, last week I was out at the IACNA conference, that's a summer conference. Um, there was extensive discussion, had a really good uh PowerPoint on our housing, housing studies, housing programs. So I looked to get a copy of that, um, talked to Ken a little bit about maybe getting, um, pulling some data and statistics for Muscetin County. Uh, they do it countywide, they don't do it citywide, but it would be um a great um information to have us, to help us with our housing inventory here. Um, extensive discussion on HF seven one eighteen, that's the tax reform program. So I told Sherry that we're gonna have a fun time that way. So, and last, um, because I wanna have, um, Ken come in here with me on this. Um, Nick Sorenson from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Um, was visiting while I was out, and I told him, get with Ken, he's your guy, he's he can take you through. Our grant, so I just wanna give him a quick opportunity, if that's okay? So he can talk about, um, because I got a phenomenal email from him as well, and how impressed he was with everything, so Ken. You wanna finish up my report?
Yeah, Nick Sorenson is one of the program officers with IEDA, um. He was the sole individual in charge of the downtown housing grant program, which used some federal orphaned dollars. Um, that is what funded two hundred thousand dollars, they got there on Spencer Street, kind of across from West Liberty. Uh, but he is also very active on Catalyst on the team. And so we took him and toured all of the IEDA local units in West Liberty. Was in town for about three and a half hours and enjoyed lunch at one of our local establishments afterwards, but. Uh, he enjoyed the community as a whole, uh, was very pleased with the work that West Liberty has been doing. Over the last handful of years, uh, and is excited for the projects to come to. Been here.
Now we get down to roll up our sleeves, there's a lot of administrative work that needs to be done, but he's, um, Mr. Torrance is doing a nice job. Uh, facilitating that, working with both of us on that information, and, you know, I can't express how important it is to, you know, um. You know, have the opportunity, because he said, you know, I'm passing through, I probably got. You know, a few minutes that I can spend, and so to hear that he spent that amount of time, so I mean, the job to everybody and. The job to those developers, um, working those those buildings and those developments for us, so.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager Gertz? Um. Yeah, do you wanna talk about We Care?
Sure. So, um, for the We Care. Kind of uh partnership, I guess, that the city of West Liberty. Has um come into this partnership with We Care that would provide the. U.S. National Guard and Iowa Army Reserves, um, families. Free to low-cost childcare within a one hundred miles of West Liberty. Um, I think uh we have a date of August twenty second, which is um the program start date, which is really wonderful, and we just found that out by email today. Um, so we will help We Care promote. Kind of with the the community members who are daycare providers and things like that, we will be putting out. Maybe working with Brittany to put out some communication of how they can connect with We Care to get some support, some support. And how um they have a a role in this process. And I think will also be very beneficial for those uh daycare and and in-home care providers as well. And as well, um, we also got an invite to the Pentagon for the signing ceremony, the date is August seventeen. Um, I read through about half of it. And I'm not sure, Lee, if you were able to read it, but i- if it had a limit of who could attend or what have you, but.
It's a military uh outline, so, yeah, so it's one of those that, you know, follow up, follow up, follow up. You know, I'll reach out and we'll get some clarification, and then we'll get some costs rounded up, so and get moving on that quickly, so. Um, for those who have mentioned that they would like to attend the ceremony, but. We'll get that.
And and the date has changed, Ken, I don't know if you saw your email, but it is now the seventeen. So the sixteen, so I just wanted you guys to get that on your calendar, in case we're all three of you, it's gonna be really exciting. Um, yeah, so we have a day where they will give us a tour, and they will have a banquet, and. I guess the head head person, I don't wanna be disrespectful, so I'm not even gonna try to say uh the rank of this person. But that oversees the army is going to be speaking there, uh, his name's uh Austin, probably, that's a fine name. Um.
General.
General, okay, the general, yeah, uh, yeah, so, uh, uh. It's it's a big deal, and it's really exciting, and we're really happy to be able to provide this. Um, incentive to our our troops um in the area.
West Liberty, I understand, is one of or the first.
It is the first to pilot the program, I believe there's two cities that might be. Gearing up to start the program, but there will be up to five regions in the whole country, so we are one of the regions.
Yeah.
Out of five in the whole country.
Very smart community to actually.
Yes.
Finalize it and launch it.
Yes.
Well, credit to you, Dana, for having the connection to bring that here, the community, and doing a lot of labor on it.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Okay, exciting, so we'll be, um, we'll we'll send uh constant communication as we work through the. The uh organization of that, and we.
And they were actually, I forgot to mention this too, I posted on the Voices uh page, they were hiring. An operations coordinator, they wanted to hire locally within. The within those hundred miles of West Liberty, it would be great to have someone in West Liberty who's interested. To basically work with the families and the soldiers to, um. You know, for anything with that the program um can offer those folks, uh, they would be a local contact person. Which is really wonderful, and it's a fully remote position. Um, so if you aren't part of the Voices of West Liberty page, you can reach out to me on my city email, and I'll connect you with that job posting if it's still available.
Um, if you wouldn't mind, if you wanna coordinate also with, um.
Sure.
With Brittany, then we can also assist in sharing that information, at least your contact information.
Yeah, of course.
Um, for some communications on our social media, etc.
Yeah, and then also if there's community members who. Um, hear about it and think, you know, this this would be a great organization for us to connect with, that needs to be a part of this network. Make sure you also tell us at the city about that, so we can make sure to make that connection. That's that's it, that is it, I'm not gonna talk anymore.
It's a good thing for us to celebrate, and I think it's a it's a really neat thing.
Mm-hmm.
For uh the feather in our cap, West Liberty, so thanks for working on that.
Yeah, of course.
Um. I just wanted to mention one last thing about the reports, when I was reading through the the police report, uh, Chief Worley, uh. It just made me smile, because I thought it was such a brilliant idea that you had uh for how to to uh increase wages. And uh I just, I just. But that was such a smart thing to do, you know, and just, I wanted to call that out, because it's not an easy thing to do, you know, it's wages, and I thought you had a really good idea with that, so. Kudos on that. Um, and I know for all, for all of, when we go through all these reports, I know department heads, it's probably hard to just sit through some of this stuff, and then. You know, there aren't all these questions or things to say, but thank you so much, I think I would speak for the council if you guys agree that. You know, it's 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 really helpful and meaningful to have these detailed write-ups, because it just helps everybody kinda stay in the loop on what's going on, so thank you for that.
Okay, just one more thing, Mary.
Yeah.
We wanted to say, um, I had an opportunity, um, the water department has set up the water station. For Rag Ride today, um, along Third Street, so I had an opportunity to see. Um, the setup and it, it, it's awesome, I mean. I can't say it enough.
They did a really good job.
Yeah.
Both girls, and I got to see it, and it's a pretty cool setup.
We'll get it, I'll see if we can get Danny to get us a picture and get it sent out to, get it on a social media, we can brag it off, so. That way when they come through town, they can definitely try our watering station that we have established, but.
Great.
It's, they did a really good job, so, yeah.
Very cool. Excellent. Okay, we'll move on, unless there's any final comments about reports. Lot of reports here tonight, I've had a month of the report on. Um.
So sort of, yeah, I was gonna say, as far as committee meetings, I was just gonna quickly say, I mean. That, that would be on me, I mean, currently, right now, we have a pretty full schedule, um, so I will continue to work my best so we can get some committee meetings set. Because we do have those development, um, I S, and we do have that H R, some H R stuff that we need to. Um, stay on top of from employee policy and things like that, so.
Yeah, it's still just.
Okay.
Sounds good. Um, yeah, and thank you, I know Mary Porten, you've been joining a lot of those committee meetings that I have not been able to, so thank you.
Yeah, cuz now. I, I know we need to also put on the calendar for next month, a um. Her uh, forms evaluation as well, and I don't know if we need to look for a date. And if that is part of committee meetings.
Always the best way to do that, is that something you should try to do tonight, or we do by email?
Um, you can, um, since you don't have it on your agenda.
Yeah.
Um, what you can do is, I, I guess what I would recommend is that Americans send out an individual. Email and then you can coordinate, um, and then it doesn't have to be voted on to set it, you can have it on the agenda.
Cuz I'm, I'm looking for the fifteenth of August to do that, but. We can, we can discuss them later.
Since everybody's here, just, can you just pick on your calendar and let me know after the meetings? Or, or just, yeah, if it works for you, then you can just have that done. If uh, if the fifteenth works, right? Just let me know after. More coordinating. Um. We'll do it, are we good there, Larry?
Did you want me to know about the air meetings filed for the task?
Um, Ken, yeah, that's already. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so the, the fire and EMS task work meeting has a meeting at six o'clock, um, via Zoom with the consultants. Um, so that'll be exciting, we'll be able to just, uh, tighten up the scope and, and talk about the process and get a timeline. Um, to report out for y'all.
That's a big step.
Are you meeting here? Yeah, from home is fine, okay, I, I'm assuming there is a.
That, I understand, you can email Eric to ask that, but yeah, everybody, everybody at home and they're all. So everybody's on, yeah, that's probably best, everybody's. On. On the screen. Okay, sounds good, we will move on to vendor voucher claims. And we'll start with claims list number one, and the amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and six dollars and ninety-nine cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, it's moved and seconded to approve vendor voucher claims this number one. Any discussion?
Is there anything that we should be aware of as to why it rose from black to red?
I have to. So I sent an email out, um, on the last claims list, when the total email. Those items were on the claims list, but the total amount was not included in the amount that was approved. So that amount total is now included in the total we will be approving tonight, and that's why it's in red as a prepaid plus for you.
Okay. I have a question, did you have any more questions?
No.
Uh, number sixty-four, dog running at large and not picked up, a hundred dollars.
What does that mean? That's what we have to pay the Humane Society, so if the owner does not come in, the city.
Oh, the owner didn't pick it up.
Owner did not check it up, and so we had to take it down to the humane shelter and we have, the city pays that fee. I thought we were paying Eddie for chasing the dog around town, but I didn't know he was catching it.
Picked up, he didn't get it.
He tangled it up there for you. No, they, we try to be as descriptive as possible, and that's what comes on that ticket, and so that's.
Okay. I'll probably chuckle about it.
Every time, yes.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, if there are none. We have a motion and a second. Um, to approve the vendor voucher claims this number one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero, we'll move on to vendor voucher claims this number two. The amount of seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? These are for cardinal graphics items.
And these were actually on the last claims list, but it had to be tabled, that's why it's listed as the prepaid, because we already paid those items, it just needs to be approved.
Got you. No further discussion, all those, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, I'm saying.
All opposed, no, motion carries three to zero with one extension by Councilman Faren. And then finally, the, the library vendor voucher claim, the amount of six thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone in the room?
Sorry.
Uh, no. I'll take it for granted, no? Um, you wanna, do you wanna start?
Yeah, I have, um. I've been told that it's quite cumbersome to, and maybe not this week, because we have a fair. But to get dumpsters at the fairgrounds emptied. I, eh, eh, from what, and the mayor was there too, something's happened, if I misinterpret this, but. It sounds like the person calls the city to let them know that they need dumped, but then that message may not get. Either. To the person, the people dumping it, or it does, and it just takes one, two, three weeks sometimes to get undone. That's in the message.
Yeah. Is that something that could be tightened up or just looked at as far as? How long that takes?
So I, I myself and um, Sherry both receive and email, typically the request is to have it dumped. As soon as possible.
Mm-hmm.
However. When our staff is already out on their schedule, um, um, and I can ask Adam as well. Um, they do their best to go dump it as soon as possible. This is the first that I've had knowledge that it's taking time. Um. That is part of the process, it's service request, because those are commercial dumpsters. Uh, most dumpsters are set up on a weekly schedule. Um, but our staff is not above and beyond, and they go and dump them upon request. So this is the first that I'm aware of, there is an issue, because the person who's communicating with us is number one said. That there was a problem. And the one time that there you were unable to get to it because they, the truck had other items on it, they took another dumpster down there to allow them to use it for the event that they have requested. And so. We do try to, if we are unable to, we do try to help them out, and Adam, if he's still on there, I don't know if he is. Um, he actually was the one that suggested to take down that dumpster to be able to help them out, because they were unable to, if we have recycling on the truck. We can't take the, we can't go dump the dumpsters, we can't put them together.
Maybe just something to be aware of, that apparently at some point, there were the. One that took a long time, or, or it sounded like it was kind of an ongoing thing, so I don't know.
And I, that I swear, we don't ever receive phone calls, and I did relay the information, they have been sending it to an employee who no longer works here, and they did relay that information to get it to the right place, so hopefully going forward, we won't have that problem. Yeah, but they've always tapped me in, and I've always. Even with that employee, we're seeing, I've always forwarded on the request, so I guess I would just, um, maybe after the meeting, or you could follow up with us and, so we can, um. Set up a conversation, because. Yeah, this is the first that I've heard of setting an issue. It wasn't a, a very thorough conversation, it was very quick, so you're just really.
We have anything else? Councilmember Schultz?
Um, I had a few community members reach out, one was concerning a dog that comes sleeping in its backyard. And I turned it over to City Manager, she.
Yeah.
I can do it, and he came without a track. I also was reached out to concerning the water meters that we discussed in our last meeting for over the summer, water laws and flowers and. And also City Manager, she, we've reached out to and shadowed them properly and. Yes, is there an update on them?
Yeah, so we, um, I. Just a quick update, so we have, um. Currently, we have a few of the meters uh available. Um, I'm going to be working with our water superintendent to discuss how many more we can bring on for inventory. Um, we have a process put in place for, um, folks to come in and be able to apply for the use of that meter. And that would be for the purpose of utilizing it to fill a pool, um, to also water gardens, um. And. Again, it's, it's just an ongoing process right now, and then I will work with um Brittany. Um, so we can go forward, the timeline we're looking at is like with the previous season that we had in place for the our irrigation meters. Were from April to October, so we currently set it. Um, so I'll be working with our water superintendent, we'll, we'll bring you, um, more information and. And see what we can get in for inventory, it's my understanding those who are interested, it has been communicated with them. To let them know that we have it available, the other option I was looking at with our water superintendent is. The possibility if we order some inventory and we have, um, homeowners who would maybe wanna just purchase one to have it. And then we could, um, pro- provide a, a process for them to allow us to know when it's connected. Um, get the meter read, and then we follow up with them at the end of the season for a final meter read, and then have them apply for the credit. For the water that doesn't put out their sewer, so.
Perfect, this will be something that we'll. Most likely for sure be doing, you know, next season, that table, all the way through.
Yeah, yeah. And then from the dog information that you had sent me, I forward that over. Um, to Chief Wor- Worley and Sergeant Berman, just so they can have eyes on it, and so. When we get a chance, we'll have a conversation about it and see, you know, from our side of it, or if they, you know, it's a civil matter, and they even run it. Plus our city attorney, just to make sure we're.
And that. Then I was, I did attend the library board meeting, of course, last month as well. Again, I would just encourage everybody to contract the library's calendar, because they have a meeting there, that's. Got all sorts of ideas and things to do, so. Yes.
Thank you, it's been a bit, and I had the opportunity to send them, very welcoming and had a good conversation, so thank you for the invite. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Anything else? Mary Porten?
Um, I don't have anything new, other than I was just approached again on what I related last meeting, which I did. Uh, email City Manager Gertz on, as far as the alleyway on behind Third Street, which on the three hundred block. Four hundred block of Third Street. Um, the resident, some residents wanted to, uh, put a coat down on this alleyway. I guess to reduce dust.
Hmm.
And also, they. Made mention of when you approach the side streets from the alley, there's a considerable dip that they're bottoming out quite a bit. And I think that's a road issue that. Since those are side street, brick side streets. Is a little bit more complicated, but, um. I just wanted to relay that they had asked again, and. The diagonal parking request.
So, um, just a quick, I, I will follow up with streets superintendent, I know. Um, Adam was gonna go out and have a conversation with the inquiry on the alleyway and the. And the ruts or the dip in the road, so we'll follow up and I'll. And I'll get some information, he was gonna go directly over and have a conversation with him about that.
Okay.
Um, said he had some options as far as the dust control for what we use, it's not toxic. Um, as well, and then as far as the diagonal parking, uh, Adam and I did have that discussion. And so with Leo being here, uh, anyway, it's been a while, but when Spencer was redone. Um, so those parking spaces that exist and the why they exist the way they are. Is because they were engineered based on spacing, uh. Traffic safety visibility, and so that is the reason why you have diagonal on some, and then you have parallel on the other. And based on our understanding, since it was designed by our engineers within that. Within that, it's, it's not something that we can. Possibly change. Um, however, I can have the discussion and, and Leo and I can take a look at it again to see if they were going to take. The two parallel parking spaces, if they're, you know, if they were gonna look at or putting in. Um, a different way of parking, then just see how that visibility. Um, would, if it would have an impact or if it would change. So, but okay, yeah. I think, or, I don't know if it helps any to. To do diagonal parking on the e- on the west side of that Spencer Street. Rather than continue the diagonal parking straight down the east side of Spencer, and you can alternate diagonal. Parking is on the north part of the, north of the alley. Because there's diagonal parking on south of the alley, does that make sense?
I have to look at it, I will look at it, though, I haven't, I haven't looked at it in a while.
Yeah.
Basically, is there any way to get more parking?
You're just looking to get more parking.
That's what they were.
On Spencer, that's in the library and downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically, that was identified because of changes, so it's. Have to change.
Yeah.
Um. And then maybe other areas.
Fourth Street and Third Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I think it was originally diagonal on both sides there, and then when we had it updated, then that's when it was changed to. Parallel, because again, it was my understanding that it was a line of sight and or an issue.
I have to look at it, it could have been pretty radius too. Let me, let me look at it. I, I don't, I, I do recall. Us looking at it, putting it down on paper, but I don't recall the reason.
Okay, good, but we'll get together and then we'll. We'll get a final.
Okay.
You know, answer, and then you can visit. With the individuals that are inquiring on it, so, you know. If you can do it, then we can explain it, and if it's something that we have our.
Goal is more part.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was.
Yeah, because they're looking to have residential. Um, and up in there.
Upstairs, and then a business downstairs that would require.
Yeah. So reasonable request to have as much as possible.
Yes, so, yeah, and, and, uh, yeah, if you could let me know when Adam talks to the residents, that would be very, okay?
Anything else?
No, that's all I want.
Councilmember Martinez? Okay, okay, I, I have. Uh, one item, we had talked a while back about a stop sign, we spoke about that intersection. Center at that street, Nelson and Third. Spencer, I'm sorry, Spencer and Third, or Nelson, um. Is, is there any, done any, any, any idea of the stop sign?
I, I need to have the public safety committee to get together to. Um, because we have to identify, make the recommendation, the ordinance as to where those signs are located.
Okay, let's follow up, I think that's something we should keep, keep an eye on.
Yeah.
Um, Councilman, I'm sorry, City Manager Gertz, public comments or correspondence?
Um, I shared all did in my reports, so I don't have any other, just to share.
City quarter copper? Comments, okay? We will move on. Uh, I will just say, uh. Briefly, and, and, and just reminded me, because we're talking about public comments. Uh, thank you to Sherry, Brittany, and Eddie for joining me at the Rotary meeting. Uh, we had a really nice panel discussion. Uh we had a really nice panel discussion and I think the room really enjoyed it, they asked a lot of questions and we talked about the nuisance process. Talked about changes at City Hall, we talked about communications, um I I felt like we were well received, due to Green Mr. Uh Brooks, you, yes. Yeah, thank you guys for joining.
I also received comments from some people that were appreciative of the staff coming because. They they really wanna be able to get to know more of the city's administration and city staff. So it was nice to see people there in person and it just put a name with face and it put a base on. The city administration, which is much needed, so you're very appreciative.
That's something that I've started now that everyone's in their positions and have their title and we've squared stuff away, um starting with the city administration. We talked about doing little um meet your city staff. Um so it's gonna be like, who are you, what do you do for the city, a couple of fun questions included.
Yeah. Hey, we'll move on to new business, uh committee appointments by mayor. Councilmember Schultz and I had a little bit of a miscommunication actually when when I uh reappointed. Uh committee members, I took Councilmember Schultz off of the employment committee. And he had said that he actually wanted the state on, and so I wanted to go back and readjust a little bit here, so we'll readjust that committee. Um so that Mayor Pro Town, your friend will be the chair and uh Councilmember Schultz will be on that committee as well.
So this is correct as.
That the highlighted is a change, yeah, this would be correct as printed. Um is that something that the, I forget, the council approves, uh or are we just having some here for?
Well, let's say. Yet you would have a motion in the second.
Excellent, is there a motion to approve uh the committee appointments by the mayor?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve these uh new appointments, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Reappointment of Chad Thomas with the Planning and zoning Commission for a three-year term ending August first twenty twenty six. Is there a motion to approve this reappointment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to to uh reappoint Chad Thomas to the Planning and Zoning Commission, any discussion?
And I will just let you know, so in the past six years, um we haven't had set. Terms for people, we, they don't really know when they're starting, when they're finishing, and so. My goal going forward is for both forward adjustments and planning and zoning. To get these back in front of you so that we can have those fully staffed. Um then going forward, we go back to the normal processes, but right now we need to get them put in line. So you will see more of these coming through as I work with the people to be able to get these on file, so that we have start dates. And dates and we can keep track of those.
Excellent, sounds great. So it's a three-year term, uh we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero, we have discussion and appropriate follow-up. On the action items for rag right, using rendezvous park. Um as beer garden, is there any question, should I bring it to discussion?
Motion.
Moved and seconded, um.
Yeah, I didn't do it, um so this is the the beer and liquor license that had come before you guys for that temporary five-day license that they put out there. This is now the portion to be able to use rendezvous as that beer tenant beer garden, however you wanna phrase that. Um so what they would be doing is you guys have already approved that license, so the recommendation would be to approve them to be able to use that outdoor space. For that.
Early drinking. Really, really. Well, you have to keep it going.
Thoughts, discussion?
I think it'll be a good, a good way to test it out in case there's future events, see how it works, if it works, yeah.
Have you heard any details from Liberty Clubhouse about their organization of the area for when they do set up, like they didn't recycle any. This is the whole word, work about of it and like.
Working in coordination with the actual rag right committee um to establish this, so and we will. From the city side of it, we will make sure that there are um, you know, that we have the appropriate. Uh sanitation with our, with our dumpsters and things there for for the cleanup. From part of their temporary license, um they have to provide a a map to show that there's one way in and one way out. When it comes to beer gardening, you have to have a a secure input from, and you have to have. Establish a plan you're going to, and how you're going to um manage the service or. Your alcohol, in this case, they only have very some hard liquids, just beer and wine product, so.
And do you have another one on the sanitation side of things, I know Emily um was given contact information for I think one or two of the. Um teams over at the high school to take care of their cans. Um they would um make sure that all of the cans are collected, taken care of, and then the team would get the proceeds from. Taking that in for donation.
Chief Wirling, I don't know if you're um on or able to talk, but I wondered what your thoughts were about this, um starting here, do you have anything you wanna add for this idea?
Then anything is just make sure there's nobody ungrading it in there.
Yeah.
And uh make sure.
Steve and I discussed the focus is to serve, so not just with the, not with the al- just the alcohol that. You know, to serve the participants, get them in, get them out safely.
They enjoy having security down there, do the fact that it's alcohol, or is that not an issue?
That's the liability that they take on by when they drown shop and with providing.
Okay, so we're looking for a consensus here by council, you wanna go ahead and prove this, option one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion and a second to uh bring this into discussion, there's a consensus to go with option one. Uh to approve the uh closure of the park to be used for the uh beer garden, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries four to zero. Discussion and follow-up on an action item for the DOT or place signage near railroad park in West Liberty for the West Liberty Country Club. Is there a motion to bring this into discussion? Hey, we have a motion and a second, uh City Manager Gertz, would you like to walk us through this one, what this is all about?
So I am going to pass this over to City for the. I've heard Reinhardt actually handled this, this work in the conversation, so. I said I support it as long as our park director is okay with that.
Looks like they're putting signs on county roads and also want one nearby railroad park.
Correct, and they originally wanted it on the other side of the road where the stop sign was, but there wasn't enough room to put it there, so then the next recommendation was to go across the street. In that right-of-way area to be able to have the left-hand turn to turn out to the country club.
So if I'm, if you're driving down Third Street, you're looking right at railroad park, the the sign would be across Prairie Street from you and.
It would be, yes, that's, yes.
In in the park, right of way.
Correct, so like where that sidewalk portion is in that area, so like where the stop sign is, if you're looking directly across, there is a logo in here. So that you can see, um so you can see where the park is and you can see where the West Third Street sign is. Then it would be right in that right-of-way area.
Right, so this view is as if you were in your car, stopped at the stop sign. And you'd see it right in front of you.
Yep, and I spoke with um Mr. Reinhardt and he said that that's really the only place that it can go, we don't have. Really another option here to place it anywhere.
So is it going to be right in front of the swing set on the right of way? So will it conceal visually some of the swing?
Do you also be able to see it, it's not a huge sign, it's just a regular, so on here I think it says the twelve high forty eight. Trailways are signed.
Okay.
So it's not, and they're ages, they're not huge signed.
Okay. I just didn't want it to conceal a lot of those swing set for like parents or people.
Yeah, is it just for one event or permanently? No, it's for to be able to, so you don't have to have the entry signs here in town that say like. You were just talking about him like turning his way to go here, that's the sign that.
Yeah.
And Adam said you guys can go either direction, he knows that DOT will bring it back again. But he said he's finding whatever direction you guys wanna go, they, he can request more information if needed as well.
What's the, what's the standard on this, I mean, I, I want people to be able to find the golf and hunting club, but. You know, I guess I just don't know what the standard is.
Yeah, I have concerns the place right there at the park, especially by the. The swing area where there's playground equipment, I I don't like it in that place.
Which is the only place, so if you have others there will.
It'd be on the the park closer to the street. Yeah, not on, not on the park side, it would be in between the sidewalk and the street.
I'm okay with the sign, but I'm comfortable.
I, you know, why can't they make it just a little off uh center from the swing, from the swings and still be within the. You know, acceptable. Just not obscure the the vision, visual of the park um equipment. The country club is a private place, right, yeah, exactly, so why not pay. Private company advertising costs and, you know, the city could. Display advertising all they want and and that would be more money for taxpayers. Residents, I mean, I don't think it's fair that private company not pay average advertising costs. Because that alone would be a lot of money that especially small businesses have to fork out to get that advertising. You know, I I just don't think it makes sense for.
I'd like twenty-six dollars, I'd like to see what potentially they're putting on that, on the sign too, that's a good point.
I I really would wanna know what exactly they're.
I assume it's just the name and arrow, that's probably why it's, it's a long name, so that's probably why it's.
Diminently, but.
Sure.
I don't know what they're putting on it.
You have thought about it?
Does that mean, does DOT have a saying where we can play it?
Well, it is in the city, but it sounds like.
I mean, I mean, I agree, it's their.
I mean, they put a sign, you know, the at the inters- at the along the streetway where the Casey's gas station is, there's that. That mark her as was West Liberty, and they put that in there, whether we like it or not, which is fine, but that's not a huge sign.
Again, my recommendation would be for council to, based on your consensus that I'm hearing from you. At this point, vote it down and then um we can send it back and. Uh I can work with you and we can send an email back and say.
Just requesting some details what you would like to look at.
Yeah.
Before you move forward, so.
I found me like consensus, what City Manager just said, sorry, go ahead if you want to vote it down or two.
Yeah, and and she's with the advertising management, so I'd like, yeah, I mean.
And this is all the information that Adam received, and he had received it before, and then she followed back up with him again because he forgot to forward it on. And then he was like, I, he messaged, asked if I could get it put on there, I said I can get it put on there, we can have a discussion, and then that's when he said. It doesn't matter to me one way or another, you guys make whatever decision you need to and then we can gather the information that we need from there. And I just want to constantly keep in mind that um currently, right now, we're looking at an upgrade to the park. So what we see now at that park, you know, and with this signage, I mean. It may be a mute point because the swing sets or the equipment may be located differently. So this may allow me just an opportunity to get with um Nick and and talk about, you know, peace kind of that. If they've already got a little bit of a plan or a vision, so that way we can get feedback from him, so based on the signage size. And its location, you know, with his upgrade, you know, with the proposed upgrades, it may be mute as to where the location is versus where the equipment is. So that would also allow you just a little more time to have that discussion.
Yeah, I need it better.
Either way you go on it, it's just, that way you can have more time to flex and information.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a consensus then to do, uh what label here is option two, to not approve the signage at this time. So we have a motion and a second with the consensus of option two, any further discussion? Uh all of them favor say aye, all opposed, no, motion carries.
So I'll to coordinate a conversation, um I'll just ask for, if you have info, we would like to see. Um if you individually would provide that to to me and copy it in City clerk. And then we will um, we will put together and email that. And I will, they have asked to have follow-up, so I will be following up with them tomorrow to let them know the decision and then I will let them know we'll follow up with more. Information some days.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll move on to item seventy, it's a resolution setting the salaries and wages for the twenty-three twenty-four fiscal year for the city of West Liberty. Departments, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Hey, there's a motion and a second to approve this resolution, uh briefly, I'll. I'll explain this as best as I know and jump in please if you wanna add anything, um the city utilizes a wage matrix that was mentioned earlier. And it's a three percent cost of living increase along with an optional two percent performance-based increase that. Management can offer to their employees, um correct me if I'm missing anything in that part. And that the matrix, and then you you also have some. Uh some roles are contracted in certain uh kind of other, other rules. So all that work has been done and you see the results here uh for the new fiscal year, anything else you wanna add?
These are for by. Right, the salary.
The salary.
That's what I was doing on my phone earlier, by the way, using my calculator. Like I think this is right.
Yes, all of the wages are based on what was approved with the budget, so there has been some uh conversation with some staff members. Um just had some questions with regards to the wages and um. My communication to them again is that, um given, given our time, we're trying to do this. Salary comparisons um and and getting them as close as we can, but we had to keep in mind that we this is what was approved within the budget. So it's not saying that we can't come back to council and and, you know, ask for, you know, additional, but at this time, you know, this is where our. Within the budget, so we'll go, the budget's already been approved, but it's not saying that we can't come back and discuss. If uh individuals that are unperforming or have an opportunity, just a fold or career changes and like that, if you could come back and do that session. Had a couple, just real quick question when I was dying this down, so like for police, I didn't see. Bonnie Strong, Nick Barker, Matt Bauer on there, are those just because they're ineligible?
No, and so currently, right now, um I have a email communication back up to Chief. Um because there was some, there were um.
Um because there was some, there were um raises um prior to July one. Oh, and I have in um the only things that we had increased for what we have received from the evaluation. And I know Chief has had kind of a hectic schedule, so we will look to come back with those on once he's had an opportunity to do those and. And then we'll make a retroactive pay to the July one based on that.
Okay. And then some uh similarly with ambulance, I know there's two or three like part time that are. That are not on there. I'm not including grassy, but there was a couple other people I think. That I didn't see.
The practices that um I did not receive any correspondence um as any direction. There's been no performance evaluations. Um so that would be the further discussion. Practice um for part time staffing, um again, that would have to be directed and that. Was not included in what the information might matter.
And then the last question I had, oh, was Emily Melissa Beth and Wayne. I think purposely left out there. Um so if you guys remember when I brought the resolution to you when they moved into their wages, I gave a wage range. So that allows them to be able to go up over the next six months. So that they got their increases and then the two new employees, they have wiggle room to be able to move up. So that would be their increase.
So Emily and Melissa, they will get an increase for moving into those new roles.
They already got it. You guys already approved it.
Just thought I wanted to.
Yeah, so you guys approved it um when we moved them into those positions and there's a wage range in there. So you had Emily at twenty three fifty up to twenty five.
Okay.
So she had that with her room in there and I did that purposely so that they would qualify because they've only been in that role very short period of time.
And then the last one, I promise this last one, is I remember last year we saw um the pool staff listed. And I don't remember seeing that this year. Will that come later or did we already?
So the pool staff was already approved in a previous budget.
Okay.
So um we don't have um those increases listed on there. Um.
Okay. That's all I got. Yeah.
And we will see those in the paper when we report the wages and that may be what you're thinking of because we report everybody in there and their annual salary in there. Um so that might be.
Further questions from council? Okay, if none, we have a motion and a second to approve this uh resolution setting salaries and wages. It is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Uh councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero. We have resolution, a resolution to approve the engineering services related to the wastewater treatment plants. Is there a motion to approve?
Much to approve.
Second, movement and second to approve. Um Mr. Foley, I wonder if you could just briefly give us an overview here.
This is the one that this Gergensen and I was talking about when he was going to give it for.
Yeah.
And we've already given him a plan. The DNR does uh go out and do resets of handling. We've gotten one of those sets back. We will get another one very shortly. We review those. And we try to um try to help DNR give you the most favorable. I have your permission to get. And this process, as we talked about earlier, it's a iterative process back and forth in the DNR, the city, the B and K. And then we also help you with their, once they come in with their final draft permit, you have to go out for um a public. Comment period in the system. It's actually something that I don't do a lot of either. It's process engineers and it's people that. Deal with these chemicals and all of these things all the time. So they're better all better suited to to give um the DNR advice.
Uh we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? It is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to resolution to accept the bid for the Rainbow Drive rebuild project for electric and enter into an agreement if there are motion to approve. Movement second as we approve this resolution. All we can begin is humans for Foley. If you could just briefly walk us through what we're looking at here.
Let's move on as BHMG. So the entity wasn't involved. So you're gonna.
Oh, see, I saw it. I'm sorry. My apologies, city manager.
No, that's okay. Um so um again, we have the bid letting for um this information was placed uh by our. Worked in the near BHNV um criticized taking in the bids. Um we received two bids and um and for the one that they're recommending, again, as I discussed earlier, um. Mr. Verz work with uh BHMG, um their recommendation is uh Kiowa. Um even though they may have just a little bit more, um we're familiar with working with Kiowa, Kiowa, we contract with them to do a lot of our. Our pull up reads, um some of our electrical, major electrical line upgrades they're involved in and uh Mr. Verz is uh. Confident on working with them with the familiar and um. We worked with them when we did the own street or sorry, the Maxon upgrade. They did all the line work and they stayed within their. Their process things. And Kiowa actually had somebody drive for it and thought was come to the building. It was known needs to be able to put a face with everyone that we are working with.
Wow.
Yes, and he was here last night, twenty minutes.
Yeah.
For the whole project.
Okay, thank you. That walkthrough. Any further questions or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion?
Yes, I did have now the recommended bid base price. That's just the. The bid base price. So so the so the. Again, I mean, as you've heard from the superintendent, um from equipment, it's, you know, they're bidding that based on what current equipment availability is. Um what costs are um. And again, they're, you know, they're maybe but by the time we get to it, you know, if there's any significant changes, then we would. We would give that for a change order or correspondence with the new change.
This is to untangle everything, right? If I if I remember Ed saying it's like a table to mess, but they want to clean everything up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did notice in here some timelines. That is that gonna is that gonna hold us up? Their following items require extended shipping periods or substitutions. One of them is fifty three less weeks. So.
We don't know what I don't. We don't know for sure right now. And that's the conversation. That BHMG and Ed were having. Um so it really doesn't matter what contractor we would go with. I mean, because that is. Yeah, that is simply probably with um. But they had, based on my understanding, um Kiowa has already been in discussion and reaching out to other. Um folks to see if they can locate and line up. I mean, that was that data that was their discussion is that. You know, once they knew that they were going to be approved, you know, then that puts things in motion so they can start reaching out and. And those things that they know currently right now that maybe taking longer, they can reach out to their connections and see if they can get. Equipment and stuff, you know, purchased, but they just can't proceed with that until they know that they're going to be the one who's big. And it's no different than us. I mean, for our city municipality with the developments that we recently heard. Um that's what we've had to do is we reach out to other municipalities or other electric um. Businesses so we can, you know, purchase down rate, you know, transformers or equipment for them to save some of that time, but. Um at that, at our discussion, they said that it's getting better, um but it's it's still not the greatest. So I think transformer purchases are ordering is like two years out. Because that's the timeframe, so.
What we what we did do is we worked with all Americans, so they're gonna do the road first. And the trail second, instead of trying to do them together. And part of that reasoning was because of this potential.
Okay.
Now, we will hold them up possibly. Still might hold them up on the trail. The road should be open and going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But the engineers did, you know, were very, very um positive and perhaps they would be able to. Like we said, reach out to a lot of their connections and maybe get materials that they needed faster.
We heard the exact same thing on the well side. The supply chain issues are are gray, but every once in a while things open up. We had a. We had a project in Clinton just recently where they told us the pipe of duct lined pipe that we were looking for, which is a big pipe. Was gonna take a year to get and all of a sudden, a month later, they're delivering half the pipe to the site that they somebody came up with pipe and made it rap. And some of that's going on.
That exists. It's very hard work or that's all?
Well, this is over it. What you're doing here is over. That's all. And it's put it straight. It's on poles, the back away from the road. That a crossing road many times, it'll come down across one time and.
Because right now, that's what 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 it is. It's crossing the road too many times. Again, electrical lines, yeah.
And then it's elimination of the the lighting.
On the trail. Okay, good. We have a motion again. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion with group of resolution? If none. It is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah.
The motion carries four to zero. We have seven, item seven H, a resolution to amend the city handbook to note hours of service for the West Liberty ambulance department. Uh. I think I can just briefly explain that. There was a conflict in the payroll because. The city staff works uh technically a shift that end at midnight. And the ambulance department has overnight shifts that go past midnight because they work on like a twenty four hours, uh twenty four hour pattern. It is just reconciling that to make it easier to do. Carols to get all lines up. Um thanks for working on all that. And um is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion or questions about that? If none, this is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Motion carries four to zero. We'll look at item seven I, a resolution to enter into an agreement with Wonderline Engineering for the fuel feasibility study. Anything to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. We talked about this. Uh and kind of had a consensus to move forward with this company. So it's a twenty thousand dollar contract for them to. Do quite a bit of study work and then develop some concept designs for a potentially i- idea of a new pool. If you want to add anything about. About that at all, or if we kind of spent a lot of time on that in our work session.
No, that this is just in a formalization so that he's able to start having them do the work since he reaped that boon to have him put this together so that we could move forward with it.
Excellent. Any further discussion about that? Again, this is a roll call vote. Councilmember uh backwards, Councilman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. And lastly and finally, uh we want to set a date for a what we'll call a work session to tour the city departments. This is something I. Um excited for. I think it's really important for council to uh see all of these political locations that you are managing. So I'm kind of going to tackle that. We just need to find a date. Is that?
Yes, and I would I would recommend that it does not have to be your city council night because I'm not always like that. You know, like in my limited time, if you're at, you know, visiting, yes, if you could set a date, then I think we're leaving with this.
We're thinking maybe sometime in August. Late August.
You may want to talk with Ashley about that again. Yeah, once I remember it. So do you know this?
Is is everyone generally generally free at like in in meetings after their. After five? Okay, so maybe we can do it a little bit earlier than the. Like at six maybe?
I may, I may, I may be out for a little bit, but we go from twenty first, twenty second.
Okay.
But um otherwise, I can everywhere else is flexible. The first two weeks of August are banned, yeah.
I'll be on a town a week of the. But anything else is. Make it adjustable.
Could I suggest August twenty ninth, a Tuesday, nine sixteen? You don't have councilmembers. So the twenty nine? Twenty nine. Let's shoot for that. We can readjust if if actually can't be there, but let's shoot for August twenty ninth at six P M. And we have to confirm that with all of. Department heads and uh that'll.
Would you like it's for city hall? I can be here.
Yes.
And the base, I want to see the base.
Anytime you want. Anytime you like. It's all on your name.
I used to play in it when I was little. My dad was a cop.
There's not a lot of room to move around.
I was a smaller baby.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I mean, you need to sound that. Very full though.
Hey, excellent. We'll shoot for that. I guess we need a vote for that or can we just have a consensus on that? On that date. Now, good. I think we're done for tonight. Except the uh motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All votes in favor say aye. All opposed, no.